We call this meeting of the mayor and board of all the persons to order. We thank you for being here. We ask you to stand, and out of respect for this body, we ask that if you will remove your hats and caps while we're in session, I'm gonna ask Mr. Eddie Gordon to lead us in our invitation, our prayer, following which Ms. Betty Allen will lead us in the pledge that leads to the flag.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, we're thankful and grateful for every blessing that you've given us, and thankful for this opportunity to be here to conduct business for the city of Bastrop. I pray that you would give us wise decisions, help us to make those decisions that would affect the most of our people for the good. I pray that you would watch over us and keep us in your safety, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated. Thank you for the meditation and for leading us in our pledge. We are really appreciative to all of you for being here tonight. Thank you for coming to this meeting of the mayor and board of all the persons of the city of Bastrop. You honor us with your presence, and we appreciate your interest. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll to determine the quorum, please?
District A.
Present.
District B.
Present.
District C.
Present.
District D.
Here.
District E.
Here.
I'll pray, ma'am.
Thank you very much, and we have let the record show that the quorum is present. As far as announcements or introductions, we have some special guests here with us tonight, and we'll introduce them and give them an opportunity to speak to us. But I wanna start by reminding us that this is Veterans Day weekend, which is a very, very special occasion, should be a special occasion to all of us because of its significance. And I pause to, I think I expressed the appreciation for this board of all the persons and the mayor as well, express our appreciation to the veterans of our country, those veterans who are alive, who have served well and have given of their time and their energy and their family's time and gone to various places all over the world in support of democracy and our way of life. And we express our appreciation to those folks who made the ultimate sacrifice and to those families as well. Sometimes days like Veterans Day go by without a lot of notice, but I think it's very important that we place it in a higher position, because if folks had not gone and served, we wouldn't have the privilege of being in this environment and enjoying the freedoms that we constantly enjoy. I guess things like that are kinda like blessings from God. We take 'em for granted, we just think they're gonna keep on coming, but that's not always the case. If you notice, in Pakistan right now, they're going through all kinds of horrendous situations, and we haven't had that. We haven't had that. I guess the closest thing to war in modern times that we've had on our shores was the 9/11 situation, but most nations have had conflict at their front doors and their communities, but we haven't had that, so we should be thankful and thank the vets, thank the families of vets, both living and those who are deceased. So keep that in mind this weekend as we celebrate. Veterans Day is Sunday, November the 11th, and various organizations and institutions will be recognizing that. I'll have the honor and privilege of speaking tomorrow at the veterans' home in Monroe. I've gone a couple times, and for some reason, they asked me to come back. I don't know if they didn't hear me the first two times or what the deal is, but I'm honored to be asked to come back and be a part of that. We're privileged. We're in election time, and we'll talk more about the election as it relates to the city of Bastrop, but this is report card time, this is grading time, this is evaluation time for folks who sit in seats and for people who wanna serve. We went through the first round of elections a couple of weeks ago, and we had to select a new senator for our district, and we're so pleased to have the senator-elect who will be representing us in Baton Rouge with us, Mr. Mike Wadsworth, and I'm gonna ask him to come up in just a minute. And we have two other individuals who are seeking to represent us in Baton Rouge, 'cause we don't have time to go down there. We don't have time to go to Baton Rouge and help make the decisions that impact us, just like you don't have time to come here on the second Thursday night of every month. That's why you elect us to do this. And I'm really appreciative of the two individuals who are gonna be offering themselves, and you'll be making determinations about on the 17th. On that same election, when you go out to vote for either one of those two gentlemen and other folks who are gonna be running, the city of Bastrop has an issue on the ballot as well, and it's a renewal of a one-cent sales tax, a sales tax that's already in place, been there for 10 years, but it goes toward the operation of our city, doing the things that we need to do, paying for the lights and paying for the cameras and paying for the folks who provide the service. So we ask that you remember in the city of Bastrop, and it's ask of you to renew that sales tax. I've learned since I've been in this office that there's a protocol that you go through when you're dealing with legislators, and the senators being the upper house, they always get a chance to go first. So Mr. Wadsworth is gonna have a new privilege. He always had to follow behind Francis Thompson and Robert Barham and, well, I mean, not Francis Thompson, but Costelka and Robert Barham and all those folks whenever that was a speech. So I've learned that, so I'm gonna ask Mike Wadsworth to come up, and we're introducing you to the mayor and board of all of them and to the citizens of the city of Bastrop. We ask that you speak to us, and we're pleased that you're here. Look forward to working with you. It's important that we maintain a positive relationship and that we listen to you and you listen to us, so thank you for coming.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and the reason why they've asked you for a third time to come is not because they didn't listen the first two. They did listen the first two times, and they liked it so much they wanted you to come back a third time.
That's a politician, you know.
Yeah. Look, I really, you know, I've been up here a lot, and this is a huge district, there's no doubt about it. Goes from Oak Grove to Haynesville and from the Arkansas Road in West Monroe, the Arkansas Line, probably about 75,000 voters. Goes about 125 miles across. Every person in that district, all 75,000 voters are important. Not one is more important than the other. We all have the same kind of, we're all entitled to one vote, but every person is important. I believe I've got some big shoes to fill. You've had a friend up here, Charles McDonald, for, I guess, almost 16, 20 years, and he's done you well, and, but the election process is about the entire district, not just one area, and as you probably have seen, I've been to, if you've been to IP, I've been there probably more than anybody as a candidate, and the first thing that I did after the election was go back to IP at 6 o'clock on Monday morning and Tuesday morning, because Monday morning it was pouring down rain and we just gave the donuts off to somebody else and we shook their hands on Tuesday morning. Wasn't it a great day, great week that we've had so far? A great week by the workers who last week said, "We will take a cut in pay to keep our plant open." They've sacrificed, and now it's time for us to sacrifice too and put ourselves, whether it's the city, the parish, and the state, and the mayor's already talked to Greg and some of the things that he's gonna be asking for, but we're all gonna have to stand behind those guys, men and women, who have taken probably what most of us won't do, is take a cut in pay. But they knew what the future was, why, and I think it has really helped, and I think what you're gonna see in the next, I'm hoping the next several months, is an encouraging thing and I think an uplifting thing in northeast Louisiana. That IP wasn't just about Bastrop. IP wasn't just about Morehouse Parish. It was the most important thing we had to do in northeast Louisiana. It affects everybody. So this is a district, I wanna listen to you. You know your town better than I do. We're gonna make some changes in Baton Rouge. Obviously, the people have made that determination that they want some changes in how we do business in Baton Rouge. What you will see from me is that I will listen, I will come to you. I'm your servant. I'll come to you and ask for your opinions and what we can do to make life in Morehouse Parish and in Bastrop in particular a better place for all of us. And when we do that, I think we'll all join hands, and I think we'll all be able to be a whole lot better off. I'll be sending you a little letter in the next couple of weeks that says, "Look, I just want your opinions." Maybe how to contact you by email or whatever else, what your three top concerns are, what do you think the state ought to be doing, three things that you think that we ought to do? I wanna use those to determine, look, let's get some results. A lot of times, we put a little money here, a little money there, and Mayor, you know that at the end, sometimes we don't have anything to look at and say, "Look, where's the results at?" I think that's been one of the problems that we've had in Baton Rouge. And the budget in Baton Rouge has gone from $10 billion to $30 billion over the last 10 years. But what do we have to show for? Not a whole lot. And I think the people have said they want some results, so hopefully you're gonna get that. We're gonna be working closely with the governor. I know he's been up here, not a stranger to Bastrop, not a stranger to Morehouse or northeast Louisiana. He believes that that's an important place. I do, too. I'm here to serve you and serve the people of Bastrop, and let's continue. The minimum that we've gotten over these last, basically the last week with what the employees of IP did and then what the management of IP did, and we still got some work to do, as the mayor knows, to make sure that what their plans are goes through. We've got a lot of work, hard work to do to bring some of their costs down, but the employees have made a huge step, and I think an encouraging step, and I think that's why you saw what happened on Monday come true, and I look forward to working with you in any way I can.
Thank you, sir, very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Look forward to working with you. Senator-elect, I think you might have a question, Mr. Hamlin.
No, mind, just two quick questions.
Yes, sir.
How'd you get away Tuesday without those donuts?
Look, I bought donuts on Monday, and I brought donuts on Tuesday.
Okay, all right. I thought maybe you didn't have them.
Oh, no, no. Look, I know better to go up there at IP without donuts, and I'll probably be going back up there some more.
But really, tell me.
Yes, sir.
We've been kinda, well, I say me, I've been kinda spoiling as far as making contact with our...
Senator Barham.
Charles McDonald, yes, sir.
Senator Barham, as well.
Yes, sir.
It's kinda close. You live in West Monroe, right?
West Monroe, yes, sir. Right outside of West Monroe.
Okay. Will you have some type of satellite or a person up in here for to help Bastrop and people in Oak Grove?
Well, let me just tell you what our plans are. There's five parishes, five days out of the week. There'll be one person in Oak Grove one day a week. There'll be a person in Bastrop one day a week. Hopefully, we're gonna work with the mayor to do that. We're gonna have one person in Farina one day a week, and we'll have one person, we're already taking care of that, in Homer, one day a week, probably sometime in the morning, 9:00 to 11:00 or something like that, but on a regular basis, we'll have somebody here. Absolutely.
You're doing good, Detective.
We want to bring our services to you. You shouldn't have to go to West Monroe, you shouldn't have to go to Oak Grove or anywhere else. Our services should come to you, not you come to our services. Thank you very much. Also, thank you for serving. It means a lot to everybody.
Appreciate it. Look forward to working with you. Thank you, sir. Part of the election process, as I mentioned earlier, would be the, this is the finals. I guess that was a preliminary, kinda like what we in football championships. We starting the playoffs tomorrow night with football, so Mr. Quinn and Mr. Little were in the preliminaries, and now they're gonna be in the finals on the 17th. And I asked them to come and spend five minutes or less in just kinda letting us get to know them, and to do this, I'm gonna go in alphabetical order and ask Mr. Sam Little if he would come forward and speak to this mayor and board of all the persons. We really appreciate you taking time. I know this is hectic time and valuable time with the election coming up, but thank you for coming to see us.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me come tonight. I am Sam Little, I am a candidate in the House race. It will be a full-time job for me. This election has been on run about issues and qualifications, and that's all it's been. The issues that I see in front of us for this area, for this state, is the infrastructure, economic development, our environment, education, healthcare, taxes, and agriculture. I've been criticized to some extent because they say I put too much emphasis on agriculture, but we'll go to it a little bit later. The three points that I see of the most interest to us here would be the infrastructure, economic development, and taxes. We have got to get an environment in the state of Louisiana that is more business-friendly to attract the businesses to come to our state. I plan on working with our new governor. He has these plans in mind of how to do it. When we get the tax situation out of the way for these businesses, it will open us up for more economic development. And along with that, we will have to have an infrastructure. Bastrop is in dire need and has been in need for 40 years for a bypass around Bastrop. Now with the new full-landing coming down from the north, we need that bypass to run on the west side of town. Now, on to agriculture. Some people don't understand how important agriculture is, and I've always said, the people that should be most concerned about agriculture are the ones that eat. This is, Morehouse Parish is the largest agricultural parish in the state of Louisiana. The largest, yes, sir. 211,000 certified planted acres. There's no other parish in the state that goes that far. District 14 has over 500,000 acres in the four parishes that it comes under. This represents, when you do the multiplication out, $300 an acre of input cost, $150 million in input cost. You roll that through the economy, you're talking about a little over a billion dollars represented in agriculture just here in northeast Louisiana. So it is viable to our economy. Now, I'll skip on from that, because I know y'all got a long meeting tonight, and you kinda limited me to five minutes. Who is Sam Little? I'm a retired farmer from here in the parish. I've served 32 years on the Morehouse Parish Farm Bureau. I've been board president now for some 15 years. I have served going on six years now the Louisiana Farm Bureau Federation. The Federation owns an insurance company. Farm Bureau is not just an insurance company. The Federation owns that insurance company. I've been on the insurance board now for three years. I also serve on the Morehouse Economic Development District Board. I was appointed also by the governor to the Sparta Aquifer Commission. I'm very involved with water issues, as we all should be. Everyone needs water, and so does the industries that will be here and will come here. I'm also on the Board of Directors of the Morehouse Gin Company. I've been there for many years. So I've been very involved with the economy here in the parish. I've raised my kids here. Unfortunately, for me and for you, they've moved off.
One minute.
You, one minute? Okay. I'm really about through, Mr. Mayor. If y'all have any questions of me now, we'll take that last minute on that.
What made you decide to run for this? You retired to run for this?
No, no, I just retired. Two daughters. No one to take the farm over. Why I keep hanging it out there at risk every year to keep farming? And to be very honest with you, I could make more money renting it out than I could farming it myself. I've always been interested in politics, but as we know, it's very tough when a new kid on the block tries to go against an incumbent. In this district, it would've been very hard. Now the incumbent's out of the way.
Okay, all right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Buddy Quinn, Dr. Buddy Quinn, Mr. Buddy Quinn, candidate for the representative seat. Thank you for coming, sir, and we really appreciate you taking the time out of your schedule as well.
Well, you're certainly welcome. I'd like to join Mike in congratulating International Paper Company, and I think that it is a perfect example of what a good collaborative effort between government and industry can do. The managers, as well as the men and women that work at IP, made sacrifices, have done remarkable things over the past two years, and all the way from New York to Memphis to Bastrop, it was just such an overwhelming success that they couldn't say no. But I think that you know as well as I do that you, too, are responsible for the success of this mission to keep it in town. These things don't happen in a vacuum, and the fact that the, our governmental agencies have worked to support International Paper Company is very encouraging to me. Now, Mike was talking about, I think, 72,000 in your district. I have 47,000. I'm still looking for those 10 people up in Fisk Union, if anybody knows where they are. It's been a remarkable experience going around the district and meeting the people of District 14, and I can tell you that my suspicion is confirmed. We live in as fine a place as there is on this planet, and it's my intent to do everything that I can possibly do to make this place a better place to live for your family and mine. Now, we know already what everybody wants. Everybody wants a job. Everybody wants to be safe in their home. Everybody wants to know that their family can have access to affordable healthcare, and everybody wants to know that they can educate their children. Now, beyond that, everything else is just the difference between a Chevrolet and a Lexus. It's all luxury. But what do we do to create those jobs? Louisiana has gotta become a magnet. We can't just be, for instance, with teachers, we can't just be looking to reach the southern average. We have to far exceed that. We have to make these teachers that are graduating from LSU, Northeastern, Northwestern, and all of the other fine colleges in our state want to stay here, and not only that, but have people want to come to us. We want to create, for instance, within the LSU Medical Center, we want to create a research center and a teaching facility unmatched anywhere on earth. We've got to quit thinking about going from 48th to 46th. We've got to do the things that are necessary to leapfrog from 48th to 32nd and then try for number one. And if we're not doing that, then we're not doing our job. We have an opportunity with a reform-minded governor and at least 60 new members of the House of Representatives to do something that hasn't been done in the history, as long as we've all here been alive. We can change this state in a way that makes us, makes more sense for the operation, for the people, and for the way that government translates its mission in every corner of this state. And the way that we do that is when we create this magnet situation, we educate our people in such a way that when the industry comes to us, we can say one of two things. We have those people available for you now, or secondarily, we can do a rapid response to your need. You need 130 electricians? Our new vocational technical training institutions can provide those for you in a six-month period. Thank you.
You got one minute.
Okay, so, and with that one minute, I'll just say this. I'm a retired dentist, and I've been in the military, I've been in the merchant marines, I've sold everything from insurance to plumbing supplies. I've done a lot of different things, and I think that makes me uniquely qualified to deal with every type of person. In politics, as all of you here know, at its core is interpersonal relationships, and what I would like to do is go to Baton Rouge and help build a kinda North Louisiana coalition that's strong enough that we can compete against that South Louisiana coalition that's been there so long. Can I answer any questions?
I'll ask the same one that I asked of Mr. Little. Did you retire to go into this, or what made you decide to offer yourself for this position?
Actually, I had a young man come to me who had graduated from dental school, Dr. Chad Gardner, whose family is from Lake Providence area, as well as his wife's. They wanted to live close, but the opportunities really are not there in Lake Providence, and this was the closest place for him. And our relationship worked out so well that if it couldn't have been my son, it had to be Chad. And so I sold my practice to him, and I started working for him, and then I got interested in this through visiting with Charlie Mack and decided to offer myself as a candidate.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank both of you for coming. We appreciate it. Thank you. I think I can truly say that we will be well-represented by either of these gentlemen should they be elected and to serve, and it's incumbent upon each of us individually and those folks that we know who have the capacity to vote, to go and do so. Go and express your opinion one way or the other, because if you don't go and vote, you're still voting, but you're letting somebody else really make the vote for you. Early voting ends, I believe, at noon on Saturday, is it? Sometimes on Saturday. If you wanna, if you don't wanna have to worry about missing tailgating at the Gremlin ULM game, or you're getting ready to go to New Orleans, Baton Rouge early for Tech and LSU, go and vote, and don't forget the city of Bastrop. Thank all of you, both of you and your supporters for being here tonight. Let us move on to our agenda. Mr. Hamlin, the Finance Committee reported item number five on our, I'm sorry, let me get the minutes approved first. We had a regular meeting on October 11th. You've had a chance to peruse and review those minutes?
I make a motion that we adopt the minutes from October 11th.
Mr. Lenore makes the motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Gordon seconds his motion. If you're ready for the question, if you have a favor, say aye. Those opposed should say no, and as have it. We had a special meeting on October 30th. What's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes on October 30th meeting.
Mr. Gordon makes the motion.
I'll second.
Ms. Allen seconds his motion. If you have a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed should say no, as have it. Mr. Hamlin, now the Finance Committee report.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt Orient 074153, being claimed for the month of October.
Mr. Hamlin makes the motion.
I second.
Ms. Robinson seconds his motion. If you have a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those in favor should say no, the ayes have it, it passes. Mr. Vereen with Main Street, we have another birthday present, a Christmas present, don't we, in addition to the IP thing?
That's right. Also, on the heels of the great announcement from IP, I don't know if you read in the paper that we were able to announce that the old-school project, as we call it, the senior housing project, is finally a done deal. The financing, the last piece of the financing has come through. So that's a $12 million project that'll be happening in our town in addition to what IP's spending. We've got a lot of things, a lot of money being spent here in Bastrop in the next year, that's for sure.
Just to give a quick, down-and-dirty review of it, the old junior high school, as we call it, down in South Washington, through Friends of Main Street, collaborated with the city of Bastrop, state of Louisiana, the federal government, some grants that we've been getting, you've got money complete now to go in and renovate that building and make, is it 76 senior, is it 76?
Yes, sir. 76 units of affordable senior housing.
And I was surprised that there'll be one and two-bedroom apartments, and somebody said, and I don't know if we can be held to this, but as low as the mid-$200 for a single per month rent, one bedroom, and maybe $500 or $600 a month for a two-bedroom, somewhere in that neighborhood.
That's correct.
That's affordable.
The whole plan, it was always to be not any luxury condominiums or anything like that, affordable housing for seniors.
Got to be old to get that, all right?
That's right.
Okay.
I may need one.
You gotta get behind me and Vicky Carpenter, but I qualify.
People are picking out their rooms.
Yep.
The guy's making reservations already?
No.
If you got the list, you can, we know somebody.
It will be, it will be done top-notch. The architects are out of New Orleans, they're unbelievable. It's nothing gonna be done cheap about it. It's very nice. It will be something we're all gonna be proud of to have right here in downtown, and it'll be an economic boost also, having people, you know, people are leaving Bastrop to go to even Monroe, 'cause we're out of affordable senior housing, and we've done market studies, and they're leaving here to go live in Monroe to get housing and things like that, that they don't have to... and things like that, that they don't have to maintain a full home. So we're hoping it'll keep people here and keep our economy going as well. Yes, sir.
Mark, are you going to put an elevator in it?
Oh, yes, sir. Yeah, it's always got to meet all kinds of codes and everything. Yeah, it does not have an elevator anywhere, but the elevator shaft will be right when you come in, actually. That's already in the plans.
I was curious, because, you know, we're talking about senior citizens.
Yeah, yeah. It's secure. The front door will longer be in the front, the main entrance. There's a lot of specifications that they have to adhere to.
And we're using all three levels, using all three levels as well.
Yes, sir. Yeah, all the levels will be used.
I just saw a preliminary on it, and it's amazing, if those of you who've been in that building, you remember, that's one of those old schools with the basketball court in the center of it. It's amazing how they're going to utilize that and make it all functional, because I thought that that was going to be wasted space. All rooms will have some real light coming in and all the rest of that, so it's going to be fantastic. That's going to be a shining star for us.
It is. It's going to be really nice. There's restrictions to doing that, so that things have to be done right. And you can rest assured they will be done to any codes that they're supposed to be done to.
Let me ask a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What's going to be in the basement?
Apartments.
There's window wells, big window wells, that go into the basement. I don't know if you can remember.
Apartments will be down there.
Really?
There'll be housing down there.
That's what the two-bedrooms are, from looking at, some of the two-bedrooms will be down there, yeah.
And in the gym.
I've been studying the thing, give me some credit now. I'm really sticking out that corner of that world.
And the gym will act as like a community room for everybody, you know, to congregate for any kind of, you know, functions and things that they have.
Think about the grand plaza in the old Washington downtown Monroe. The auditorium is a multipurpose functional room. Meetings can be held there, receptions can be held there, activities for the folks who live there, just all kinds of things.
And if you'll remember, there's two courtyards that are enclosed, which, that's safe. You can go outside, but still, and one of them had been enclosed one time for the stage years and years ago. That will be reopened, and there'll be two courtyards for the people to get out and enjoy without having to leave the actual grounds of the building. It'll be very secure.
Good.
So we're excited. And also with that, I think most of y'all were out for the Which Way to Main Street? That was a big success. There was thousands, literally thousands of people on the sidewalks of Bastrop. That's always a big time for the merchants downtown. It's one of the biggest projects, events that Main Street puts on. So it was a big success again this year, and we were really excited about it. As you know, this is our event season at Main Street, and this Sunday is the annual open house. And I hope some of y'all will be able to get out. That is the, will be probably some of the busiest days for the local merchants in town. Lot of them will, this will be their largest day, because the day after Thanksgiving, the traditional busy day for merchants. A lot of people unfortunately leave Bastrop and go to Monroe. This is our busy day. So if you have a chance to get out and be seen and see some people and do some shopping and spend, buy your Christmas gifts while you're out. And the other project that we've still working on, it takes a while, is the wayfinding signage. The main entry sign coming into town, the gateway sign, has been replaced with the new logo. I don't know if y'all have seen that. And we got it as large as we could, because when you're traveling, that was one of the problems, that you couldn't see it. And so now, I think the B is a little over two feet, so, in Bastrop. So we've got a lot of good feedback on that, and we're proud to get the new logo up and going. Now, we're working on the directional signage, so that once you get into town, it directs you to the different places, which is like the municipal center, places like that, the museum. So that's our next phase of that, is to get those up. In addition to getting up the other signs coming into the, the next one will be the north and east entrance into town. We'll have the big signage like out on one sixty-five. That's kind of where we're at. Any questions, y'all?
Well, compliment you on the jambalaya and jazz Saturday night.
Oh, yeah. I forgot all about Equinox.
After working so hard, the food was good. They used the old Saul Snyder building to have a jambalaya dinner, and it was an indication, which ties into another effort that we're making in trying to recruit a more upscale restaurant. This is no criticism of our existing restaurants, but so many of you and us go to Monroe on Friday and Saturday nights to get good meals in restaurants, and we're actively recruiting restaurants, either the development of restaurants in Bastrop or folks from outside coming in. But that jambalaya session was an indication that people do like fine dining and are willing to come to activities like that. We have a couple of hot prospects that we're working on now. We're dealing in trying to recruit everything from Piccadilly all the way up to the Connors, the Sage kind of places, Monroe Steakhouse kind of place in Monroe. But the thing that's going to have to happen, if we get a restaurant of that caliber, then we're going to have to support it and use it. We're going to have to support it and use it. But compliments to you on that, and we appreciate what you're doing. Senator Le, mentioned collaboratives. He has no idea how we collaborate and work together and do things. We bring all of our resources together. We appreciate that, Mark, and keep on working.
Mr. Vereen.
Yes.
I made a note to tell you that the sign was beautiful. Since I had a little bit to do with it in the beginning. I was really, I have not gone very much lately, but we were coming back from Monroe, and I thought, oh, it's got the new logo.
Looked good, didn't it?
Yes, it does. It looks very good.
We're anxious to get the other signs up, too.
By the way, and listen, before you, by the way, those of you who are watching this live telecast on cable, cable channel seven, the logo that's the intro to this council meeting is the new City of Bastrop logo, which is the same one out on the sign out east. And I might, at this time, I want to appreciate Public Works for doing what they're supposed to do, but they've cleaned up the spot out on four twenty-five.
Oh, great. Ready for the sign.
Yeah. The new signage will be out by the old Green Brothers Dairy, I appreciate it.
That's correct, yes, sir.
And there's some work that needs to be done out there on the sign, sort of similar.
It's not, it doesn't have all the brickwork, but it's the exact sign. It has a lot more ironwork to it.
Using the logo and all.
Yes, sir, same sign.
So we're branding ourselves, and you're going to hopefully be seeing more and more of the new Bastrop emblem. And we're going to be talking to merchants, as I appreciate it, about using this on their bags that they carry out and more and more stuff in the store. So when you see, and the logo has the dome of the courthouse with some rays, and I forgot what the rays mean, but we don't need to go into that, but Bastrop written across there. We're identifying Bastrop Morehouse Parish and bright sunshine. Mr. Lenore.
I just had one question. I've been kind of noticing the activity going on across from Lee's there. It's coming along, it's looking good. I like what I see. Are there any fillers for the property next door?
What, the ones that haven't been restored? That's all, you know, the Smiths bought those two properties, and they have, they've redone the fronts of those, the insides are not done. But he was, he wanted the fronts done right away, and it is a huge improvement. I guess y'all have seen that.
And the Smiths are the people who first remodeled the building over on Harrington Street next to where Dr. Quinn's office was. It used to be a funeral home, insurance office, as well as the big white house that used to be an ugly gray house down East Madison. They're the ones who redid that. And they take, what's the name of that TV show? Flip the House?
Flip the House, yeah.
Yeah. They do that kind of stuff. They come in and take these old buildings.
They buy ugly houses.
Ugly houses and turn them into, someone else was about to speak. Is that it? Thank you, sir.
Those other properties, we're hoping to get something done. That's all tied up in an estate right now. To answer your question on that.
Good. Thank you, sir, very much. Okay. He works for us, we don't applaud him.
That's right.
Ms. Kay King with Morehouse Economic Development.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Hawkins. I'm going to really be brief tonight. I have had a very busy month, and I hope that next month, maybe I can go in depth with a little bit more on some of the projects that I'm working on. But I just wanted, and I know that everyone's had a comment about International Paper, but I want to tell you about something that happened today. Starting back for the last couple of years, that every developer that calls my office, the only question that they had was, is International Paper closing? And the cloud of uncertainty that has hovered over the Bastrop area has really strangled us. And it started long before the announcement. There's been rumors about the closure of the mill for years. And so this week has been a wonderful week, and I just wanted to say that today, a developer called about our Walmart development. And already, people are beginning to look at Bastrop in a little bit different light. And I think that we are going to see huge changes in the Bastrop area as we get under, get out from under this oppression that we've had from the uncertainty of our community. And I think that we're looking for a great future here. But I won't go on anymore about that. I just wanted to make a positive note, and we do appreciate all the sacrifices and the hard work that the people at International Paper did to make this happen. And I wanted to just make a couple of comments, that I have been attending, attended some meetings from Energy. That Energy has, is trying to put together some programs to be much more proactive and assist economic development efforts. And so, you know, and that's part of my job, is that I attend a lot of meetings and I give feedback in the community about some of these things. But I think that we're seeing a much better coalition of people in northeast Louisiana, putting forth the effort to work together through programs like that and through the prospect hosting program that the City of Monroe did this week, where we had groups from all over northeast Louisiana come, and we did a mock prospect hosting. And during that time, I really looked at the Ditto building a little bit differently. And I think I've got some really good ideas, although we have a couple of prospects for that building. I picked up some really good ideas while I was down in Monroe looking at a distribution center that they had down there. So I'll be getting with you on that. And I wanted to just make another comment that, you know, our industrial park is a great resource, and that I have worked diligently to try to do things in the industrial park. And I was very encouraged this week when our Senator Mike Walsworth and representative from Louisiana Economic Development, Bob Fudiker, dropped in to take a look, went out, visited the industrial park and looked at some of the things that we're doing out there. And I think that we're going to get a lot of support for a lot of the initiatives that we have in place out there. And so I'm very encouraged and very positive, and it's just, it's been a great week to be an economic development person in Bastrop.
Well, thank you.
And I appreciate all of the support from the city.
We appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. Mr. Steve Leesfield, Airport Manager for Bastrop Morehouse Memorial Airport.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to turn, do this, I've got a report for you, but I want to do this a little backwards, because we have some of the youth from the Bastrop wings here tonight, and it's a school night. And if they'd stand, please, or come up and say hi.
Yeah.
Introduce themselves. Oh, and the supporters, Tanya Martin.
Well, thank you, welcome.
There's one not standing, he's shy, I guess, in the red jacket, but he helps us, he helps us out, too, and we're trying to get him organized. College students don't stand anymore. You've got Tanya Martin that works with us on the staff, and also Mr. Floyd over there on the camera works on the staff. But if they need to go and get their sleep, I understand. I'll just do this a little backwards.
The best is yet to come. Don't turn them out.
I know.
We're going to serve popcorn after work.
You think? Donuts, somebody said donuts. Senators, Senator said donuts. A lot going on at the airport. Let me pass these around while we're talking. Here's some before and after pictures of the new seal coat project that was completed.
Seal coat means what?
They seal coated the runway taxiway and parking ramp to preserve it until we can do further things with the airport. It's a preservative coating on the airport. You'll see the pictures, it really came out nice. We've also installed reflective tiles on the taxiway and parking ramp to guide the airplanes in at night, in lieu of our light project that's upcoming. The state inspection was October seventeenth, that's complete, no significant write-ups. The FAA inspection was November sixth, a couple of days ago, no significant write-ups. The next airport inspection is in May of '08. Upcoming projects. The State of Louisiana has approved this list as the mayor and I got together, came up with some projects. The State of Louisiana has listed the following projects for us. Revised the airport master plan. That'll be done through an engineering firm. Security fencing for the airport, and that'll be the entire four hundred acres, four hundred and forty acres. We were going to do a fence up and down the west side of it, but the state said just do the whole thing, so that'll be a project. They also put on our list more hangars for our expanded parking taxiway. A runway extension of one thousand feet.
Which, now that's the biggie.
That's the biggie. There's a.
Say that again. That means we're going to extend it from?
Four thousand to five thousand.
We'll have almost a mile-long runway.
Right.
Which can accommodate.
That'll service anything corporate today. Maybe excluding some of the three-engine stuff, the Falcon jet.
Some military touch-and-go kind of stuff.
Oh, oh, the military can come in with their beach jets all day long. They can come in now. So we'll have, their trainers and all, yeah, it'll service everything, Lear jets, Stack Consta, all the corporate, all the new light jets.
Some of the planes that couldn't come in before will be able to.
Correct. There's an overlay project along with that, which will up our gross weight from fifteen five to whatever, maybe twenty thousand, for a single wheel, single wheel on each landing gear. If you tandem that, it goes way on up, so. the survey is complete for our localizer performance. They have a new approach system coming, and it's called LPV. It's Localizer Performance with Vertical, or Glide Slope. It'll allow the airplanes in the weather, instead of coming down to six hundred feet and not seeing the runway and having to leave, they'll be allowed to come down to two hundred feet, two hundred and fifty feet and one mile. So that's within fifty feet of the most precision approach they have in Monroe. So that surveying's already been done. Excuse me. That'll be paid with federal dollars, straight federal dollars. The hangars are for profit. We'll be able to rent those. So some of our entitlement funds, that hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year entitlement funds, some of those funds will be put with state and federal money for those hangars.
T hangars.
T hangars, yes, sir.
For private owners, they don't have to be in the big hangars, we'll have a series of T hangars.
Series of individual hangars.
On the taxiway that we put out there for that. So we built the pads, I mean, we built the little strip.
We'll build the pads and put in the utilities. Well, actually, the money will build the pads. We, I've ensured the state that we would run, or make sure that, it may be in the cost, but utilities, as far as electricity to the first hangar, then they're just side by side.
But we built a strip out there that the hangars will be on.
Yes, sir, that's complete.
Already, yeah. So we did the preliminaries, now we're going to build a building.
Yeah, that foundation's all done. So now they're saying, okay. All of these projects, with exception of a little bit of entitlement money, for the T hangars, will be no cost to the city. It's all federal-state. And it'll be either, it'll either be ninety-ten federal-state or ninety-five-ten, we're not sure yet.
Ninety-five-five?
Or ninety-five-five.
I like a hundred and five, but I'm.
No, I understand. Now, the downside. Senate Bill thirteen hundred, that we talked about four or five months ago, is still in committee. That bill is the one that has our funding for the next time period. From nine eleven to now, that funding was three point seven billion dollars nationwide for airports. And that, that dropped dead this year. Senate Bill thirteen hundred, we don't know what the time period's going to be, because it hasn't been voted on yet. And we don't know the amount. Hopefully, it's three point seven billion or more. But we need that to fund those projects. The problem is, it's not voted yet. So we won't know about the funding for all these projects until Senate Bill thirteen comes, you know, to fruition.
Okay.
The projects that we're going to do locally include, we're going to place some bumper posts around the fuel system. We had talked about four or five. Looks like the state wants us to put in five or six or seven around the avgas and jet fuel system pumps to prevent aircraft from hitting the tanks, the above-ground avgas tank, or the pumps. So we're going to do that on a local city level. Also, the federal government has mandated by the end of the year that we move our hold lines, and they're in the pictures there, taxiway hold lines. We're in dispute. The state was saying leave them at 150. The federal government is saying move them to 200 feet. The federal government gives us 90 to 95 percent of our money, so we're going to move them to 200 feet. And we'll deal with the state, you know, if they flap, if they, you know, ruffles their feathers, so be it. We're going to go with the people who give us our money.
Okay.
Another thing we're going to do is change the traffic pattern. And that's that little sketch that you were given. Currently, for runway 3-4, the aircraft come over the city and it's a left-hand, in left-hand turns, enter the traffic pattern, a left-hand turn to the final, a left-hand turn to runway 3-4. That's in red on that sketch.
That's one of those qualitative life things. We had some complaints about planes coming over residential areas. So that was done to try to alleviate some of that. That's a kind of plan thing. Okay?
Correct. And that'll be done. Also, the emergency generator has gone out for quotes to three electric companies, Bennett Electric, Wire Electric, and Wartaw Electric. We've got approval to go with building the pad. The emergency generator will show up. One of those electric companies will install it, hook it up. It'll power the terminal and the airport in case of power failure. That's a done deal.
Okay.
We're trying to get cameras, a camera security system out there to enhance our security and safety. At February's DOT meeting, in February, DOT meets with the governor, Department of Transportation, Phil Jones, who's our director down in Baton Rouge. And he is invited, he is going to invite Governor Jindal to the April Airport Managers Conference in Baton Rouge. Since they're holding it in Baton Rouge, he feels pretty confident he can get the governor to stop by. So that'll be great. The last thing is fuel. We bought our last fuel projecting the usage on sales in '06. The sales of '06, we project our usage.
Let me get you to hold off on that one. That's a little bit too technical for this environment, I think.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. I appreciate it.
No problem. I understand.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Any questions for Mr. Lishfield?
Any questions?
Okay. Thank you. Use the airport. Fly in, y'all. Let's see if we can move this a little bit faster now. We have some routine things. We have Resolution Number 071226, a resolution authorizing the City of Bastrop through its mayor to make application to the Louisiana Community Development Program for grant in order for improvements to the street system under the FY208209 program. I need you to adopt that resolution so that we can progress with the application.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 071226.
Mr. Gordon makes the motion?
I'll second.
Ms. I would second that motion. If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed should say no. The ayes have it. Item number 10 is Resolution Number 071225. And this is very important. We basically started on this the other night, on the 30th, when we had our council meeting. This is a resolution from this body endorsing, supporting, and encouraging people to vote, to renew, vote yes on the sales tax. It's just as simple as I can say it.
Need a motion?
We do.
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution 1225.
I second.
Ms. Robinson seconds Mr. Lewis' motion. If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed should say no. Just to give you the significance of this one-cent sales tax that we're trying to renew, it would mean somewhere between $1.6 and $1.9 million out of our $11 million budget. You know that what we do, we do through people. So if this doesn't pay us, the way that we get within budget is by removing, eliminating, reducing our workforce. And then that means that we can't deliver the services that people want so badly. So encourage people that you know and everyone else to vote for this issue.
No.
Mr. Hamlin.
Is this the one we're supposed to pay for?
We, as a, what the city is doing is running some announcements on Channel 7 on the cable network. If they haven't started, they will start, informing people that the election is. We can't use city money to take a position, to say yes, vote yes on this issue. We can educate folks that this is a one-cent sales tax that's used for these purposes. Let them know that it's on the ballot. What we've done in the past is the mayor and board of all the persons on previous tax issues, those who would desire us of doing so, have contributed to buy ads in the local newspaper and/or signage to put out to do that. That's not City of Bastrop money. But this is what we're supposed to contribute to do, yes, sir. But not, not this resolution, but the effort, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay. Item number 11, discussion on industrial growth. People who saw that agenda item say, well, what the heck are they talking about? This is talking about what Senator Leck mentioned in his discussions, the accolades to IP and his workforce, what K. King has talked about, what Mark has talked about, what all of us have been involved in. Some of us, along with the others, because we've been working with IPOs some period of time. I can think back to 2005 when they came out in June with that announcement saying that they were going to change their portfolio and they were doing a six-month study to determine if they were going to close the mill. I was in Washington, DC, and I called the president of IP Corporate and made a plea for them not to close it and asked what could we do and all the rest of that. And we were also interested in if they did decide to close it, we didn't want them to shut it down and leave it empty and vacant. We talked to them about if they did close it, to sell it to somebody so that we could try to get it back into action. We even talked about in some circles exercising eminent domain and taking it over if they had closed it because it had economic impact. We've been involved in meetings from 2005 up to this point. And when the employees, as has been said already, made the determination that they were not going to let that mill close being unprofitable, when they started making more money for the mill and made it hard for corporate IP to shut down a profitable facility, and things happened to change it. When all of that happened and the final announcement was made the other day, it has realized that local governments, too, need to do something, step up and help IP be saved. They are going to spend $10 million in buying equipment as part of the new process, equipment that will be used in the new PUP process. We charge sales tax on, just like when you buy a car, you have to pay sales tax on that car. Well, in any business, sales tax is paid on it. In an effort, in talking to IP to find out what it is that governments could do, we found that if we could exempt, and we're talking specifically IP in this case, but generically as it relates to what we're going to do, we found out that we could exempt them from the sales tax on the purchase of the equipment that they're going to use in this process, it would be a tremendous help to them. The City of Bastrop has a 3% sales tax, 3 cent sales tax. When you go to the store, Walmart in Bastrop, and you buy something and you pay a dollar 10 or whatever it is, whatever, $10 and a dollar, whatever, $3 of that or 3 cent on the 10 cent that you spend comes back to the City of Bastrop to fund the projects and the things and the services that we give. On $10 million, 3% is $300,000. How you know that? Well, you know, that's a simple one. Don't ask me anything beyond that. We're passing, we're presenting for discussion an introduction tonight an ordinance which will grant to industries that spend at least $5 million on equipment. And Mr. Lawrence, I need you to come on over to the podium as I confuse everybody with this. We want to grant them a sales tax exemption. And I'm saying industries because we cannot pass legislation specifically for one entity. We can't do anything, Senator Leck noted, you can't do legislation in Baton Rouge like that. So we can't do something just for IP. The legislation that we passed, so this ordinance that we're introducing, will be applicable to any business that's going to spend according to the way that Mr. Lawrence and Mrs. Steve Katz from the school board wrote this ordinance, up to $5 million. $5 million or more, we will exempt them from sales tax. Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Doug Lawrence, the city attorney.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, you are correct. And up until about 4:30 this afternoon, I was busy confering with Mr. Katz in our office to draft a working ordinance, one that would be generic enough for all of the public entities within Morehouse Parish to be able to use for this purpose, to work collaboratively with the city, the police jury, as well as the school district, and any other taxing body. On tonight, we're presenting a draft of an ordinance for introduction for this body to consider, which reflects what it is that the mayor indicated, an exemption, a grant of an exemption on the sales and use tax that is levied by the City of Bastrop on what would be activities that involve the expansion or retrofitting or the repairing or other like activities of plant sites that would fit the profile of International Paper Company. So it is presented tonight for introduction if it is the will of this body. Also, if you have any questions.
Let me, let me go back and say one other thing. And if you, if you think about what we just did a moment ago, adopting a resolution in support of the one-cent sales tax, this body just adopted a resolution encouraging folks to vote to give us the one-cent sales tax, one of the one-cent sales taxes that we have back in. And then we come right back behind it and we're giving up 3% on $10 million. He said, y'all must be crazy. Well, I guess we are. We're crazy because we're concerned about the community. Now, the $300,000 that this one, that this exemption, the $300,000 that this exemption to IP, if we pass this, will benefit from, we have not had yet. That's money that we haven't had. It would be welcome. Chief Freeman could do more about hiring police people and the fire chief could get a new fire truck and Public Works could get new equipment. We just passed a thing last week, buying a 62, $70,000 road grader. We could use the $300,000. But there's a larger purpose, ladies and gentlemen. There's a larger purpose beyond our immediate needs. And we are willing, I hope that you will be willing, to accept this introduction and next month at our regular meeting, adopt this ordinance, granting that. And it sounds like we're being hypocritical. We're asking the citizens to give us money again on one hand and then we're giving up. No, we're not. You know, we are crazy. We're crazy about this community. We want it to survive and be viable. And we can't afford not to do it straight up. We can't afford not to do it. So those folks who are looking at us and say, well, why are y'all doing that? Well, we're doing it for the general welfare of, as Senator Leck said, this mill, if, when we look at statistics, less than 25% of the folks who work at the mill live inside the city limits of Bastrop. Probably less than 40% of the folks who work at the mill live in Morehouse Parish. They live in Wartaw and West Carroll and East Carroll and Richland and Union, southeast Arkansas. So the existence of that mill impacts the whole region. We're singing the same song. We've been singing that and K. King and the rest of us, we know that. So we can't be selfish. We have to think, sometimes you have to, it's like veterans. Sometimes veterans and many veterans make individual sacrifices for a larger good. And that's what we're doing here. That's what we're talking about. So this is simply an introduction. Do you have any questions you want to ask Mr. Lawrence? Mr. Hamlin?
Attorney Lawrence?
Yes.
The last meeting we were in, we spoke in reference to $2 or $3 million for equipment. And this ordinance has a $5 million. I have no problem with it, but I don't want to adopt something that's going to cut them out. They, they're going to spend $5 million? Because the way I understand it, if it's less than $5 million, then they won't be exempt.
Right. There's a discussion on that issue. It is something that Mr. Katz and I talked about at about 4:15, 4:30 today. And this ordinance comes to you for introduction with the understanding that, number one, it can be amended before the final adoption. Secondly, what we talked about was is that probably Mayor Hawkins and a few other people have been more in contact with the leadership at International Paper than anyone else. And so we would, before we do the final draft, we would find out exactly what number we need to use to fit the profile.
And let me respond to that. And that's a valid question because we don't want to put a ceiling in there that's above what it is that IP needs to reach. It's a definite that they're going to spend at least, well, they're going to spend up to $10 million, but at least $10 million, they're asking for assistance, as you probably know, Senator Leck, from the state. And the state is granting accommodations on some requirements that they have as well. So the $5 million is comfortable to IP. It can be lowered if we wanted to. So that's just a number that you pulled out of the air of, I think, Mr. Lawrence. But it can be lowered if we wanted to. It can be raised. But for sure, IP is going to spend more than the $5 million. So we won't be eliminating them with that number.
Right.
Why don't we do this while we're here? And there's nothing magic about it. Let's bring it down to three.
Yes, sir.
Let's put three in there. And three will be what we will bring back and present on next month. That doesn't, that doesn't erode anything?
No.
And we hope that there are some other $3 million businesses who are going to spend $3 million on equipment. We'll grant them the exemption as well. Somebody, we talked about, well, what about other businesses? Because we have this capacity, if there is a business that is desirous of locating it within the boundaries of the City of Bastrop and they're bringing significant jobs in and making a significant impact, we'll be back in here doing the same thing for them as well. And we got to determine what significant is. And it needs to be somewhere $3 to $5 million impact on the economy rather than just saying, okay, you're going to build a mom and pop store over there and you're going to hire two people. So we're going to exempt you from sales tax from all the stuff that you buy. Nah, I don't think so. We can't do that. We have to have some reasoning. But good question. And let's do three. Is that all right with you?
It's fine.
And there's a follow-up comment on that. The other question and the other issue that
we dealt with is to grant the exemption until December 31.
'08.
'08.
And the time window in there is because they feel that they're going to be, they really said they're going to be through with it in the fall of '08. But I said, okay, let's go in and make it reasonable and let's put December 31, '08 as a drop-dead date. It'll expire at that time. We have a prerogative. If they're not through, we can come back and we can change that.
One last comment. I would ask that a public comment and hearing period be fixed for the next regular meeting in December of 2007, say at 5:45 PM, right before the council meeting.
Citizens who wish to come and comment on this ordinance will have the opportunity to go through that. And their comments will be heard and be considered before we adopt this ordinance.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Lawrence? This ordinance, which is Number 074153, is duly introduced at this meeting and will be reheard, will be completed at our regular board meeting in December. Item number 12 is discussion and/or action on annexation of property in the City of Bastrop. I received one letter and I've heard verbal comments from other folks who are talking about asking the city to annex property in various sections of the city, and particularly property across from the Walmart, in the area of the New Walmart on 425... four twenty-five, uh, one sixty-five east, or north, or whatever it's called. Because of the promise of property in that area, and property owners are asking the mayor and board of all the persons to consider or to, well, to consider annexing that property into the city limits of Bastrop. And somebody will say, "Why?" Because we're so good, everybody wants to be a part of it, right?
Yeah.
Right.
It's because of the police department, because of streetlights, because of infrastructure and things of that nature. And as I appreciate it, major businesses like to be a part of corporate boundaries rather than in, in unincorporated areas because of some of the capacities that they bring. Comments welcome for discussion. Mr. Lawrence, first, maybe, maybe before all the persons start speaking, talk us through the process. We, we annexed the, what is now the Walmart property, which is the John Bond subdivision. That's the official name of it. Uh, the John Bond subdivision was annexed into the city of Bastrop because Walmart insisted on the property where they develop and build a new store be within the meets and bounds of the city of Bastrop. Talk about the process, please, sir.
Well, the process starts with defining the particular area to be annexed, uh, and, and describing it by, with a meets and bounds description, saying what the, what the total geographic description of it is on all sides. Once you do that, there's a certification process that you have to go through with both the registrar voters, if you have registered voters who actually live within the geographic area that's gonna be annexed. There's a certain percentage of those individuals that have to agree, uh, or go along with the desire to be annexed. And then there's also a parallel process that involves the actual property owners, where you have to get a certification from, uh, the tax assessor's office, indicating who the owners are, and also their agreement and their assent also to be, uh, to have their property annexed. And then there's the preclearance process with the justice department, where you have to submit, uh, certain items of information to them to show that there is no retrogressive impact on the rights of voters who live in a geographic area. Probably, out in that section of town right now, this, this is the best time to go after an annexation, because there is an abbreviated justice department approval process, when you don't have anybody, or very few people that live in the area to be annexed. Uh, once you get essentially approval from the justice department, indicating that there is no objection to the annexation, and also, once this body acts to approve, uh, the annexation of the geographic area into the city of Bastrop, then it is in fact annexed. And, uh, at that point, probably the one thing that you have an obligation to do is to provide, uh, law enforcement protection and fire protection. Those are the two definites. And, uh, also, you have the right to collect sales and use taxes on sales and use tax-type activities that occur within the area. So, Mr. Mayor, that is essentially the process.
Okay. Let, let's look up a minute. Let's talk about the positives. What's sent it for us? Uh, Mr. Lawrence just mentioned that once, if businesses or retail establishments or activities take place there, we'll get sales tax. What else, what else, what else do you guys think? And ladies, what do you think, what would, what would be the benefit to the city of Bastrop?
Is there anticipated growth, uh, in that particular segment?
There seems to be, if, from, from what I'm seeing. This is out in the eastern, on the eastern corridor that we're talking about.
Across from Walmart, yeah.
Seems to be where the most growth, uh, for the city is right now, at least in terms of retail and business development.
Okay. Let me, let me, I'm doing my T-chart here. Property tax, sales tax. We didn't talk about property tax. So, we would, we would gain from property tax. We'd have to put in, and we, we, when we built, when we, when we built infrastructure for, for the Walmart project, and that infrastructure that was built for the Walmart project was from a loan that Walmart made to us, a zero-interest loan for three, five?
I'm trying to remember the number of years. It was three to five. I think it was more like five.
Five years. A zero-interest loan from Walmart for five years, and we're paying that loan back with the difference in what Walmart was paying us in collecting its sales tax at the old store versus the amount that has, that it has increased since they've been in the new store. So, the debt service on that, on those couple, three million dollars, or whatever it was, 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 is served by the money that's collected because they've run. So, we, when we put, and the infrastructure that we put in to accommodate the Walmart was we widened, we had to widen highway, the highway, put in a signal light, put in sewer, and help with the water, right? Is that true, Mr. Jones? Water, sewer, streetlights, road widening? Uh, that, we did that with money that Walmart loaned us, zero interest, and that we're paying back from the increased growth in revenue from their sales. Now, when we put in the sewer line on the Walmart side, and we had to run the sewer line from where it stopped at the Neas Williams, at the city limits there, down to that point and put in a lift station on the Walmart property, we also bored under the highway, and on the south side of the highway, we put a manhole there with the expectations of future growth. Miss, Miss Oliver.
Yes, sir.
So, business, individuals who come in, and if, if you annex that property, or businesses that come on that side, will have access to basic sewer, but we don't have laterals running up and down that side yet, do Mr. White? We don't have laterals going back either toward the west or going east if there was more development there. If, if we annexed that property, the developers would have to come in to put in if there were gonna be streets in those areas, if they were gonna be sidewalks in those areas on the private property, streetlights and things that own the private property part. That would be the private property owners. We, I don't, we've approved the streetlights going out to that, but I don't know if they've been installed yet, Mr. Little.
I don't know if they've been installed.
Okay. We've approved, we've, and sometimes we get slow on stuff, and we just don't realize that we hadn't done something. We had not done, from October last year until this point, we had not run streetlights from where they stopped at the previous city limit boundary out to that point. So, we approved that, I believe, last month, and got quotes from you guys, and the contract has been led to do that. Now, you're already patrolling out there, Chief Freeman. That's already in the fire district, Chief Montgomery. We're maintaining it right, right away, Mr. Jones. And, and unless, we would have control over whether or not the developers of that property, if they developed that property and planted it out, and if they planted streets in there, they could dedicate the streets, but unless we accepted the streets, those streets would be the private owners. Is that right, right, Mr. Jones?
That's right.
Okay. They have to build to our specs, but they wouldn't be our streets unless they built them to our specs, and then donated them to us, and then we would maintain them and all that. Okay. I'm just trying to talk through what it is we're talking about. Mr. Hamlin?
Hi, Mr. Jones. This, uh, property, sixty-one thirty-six and sixty-one forty-eight, I don't know how deep it is, but, you know, if, if it, one guy was in here, owned from there to the Grabout Road.
Grabout Road, absolutely.
And, and what it would do, if, if it is open after put a road in there, it would, it would really help people coming up to Grabout Road, 'cause many of them can come through there, rather than coming up that by that Circle K.
And catch that light, huh?
Yeah. It'd come up and catch that light, rather than duckling dodging up there by that service station. So, that, that would be, does it go to the back? If the back goes to the Grabout Road?
The property goes from one sixty-five to the Grabout Road.
That's all right. Thank you.
Mayor, I have a question.
What, what are you looking at?
Not just, oh, it, it right there says, property sixty-one thirty-six and sixty-one forty-eight.
Go ahead, Ms. Robinson.
Um, we have two letters, and there's a space. Do these properties meet five nine eight six, five nine eight two, and sixty-one thirty-six and sixty-one forty-eight? Do those two people, their properties meet? Or is there a space? When you annex it, and somebody else owns the difference in these numbers, do we annex their property too? Or do they have to come in and ask? Or how do you do that? If there's?
No. If there's space between them, you're gonna be annexing the separate properties.
Okay.
Now, I, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that there is another annexation rule that says that if you're surrounded, I think about seventy-five percent of an area of land that is within the city, then the city has a right to annex what it surrounds, whether there's permission to do that or not.
Okay.
And let me clarify too, Ms. Robinson, in, in answering your question. If you think about it right now, the city limits stops at the western boundary of Neas Williams, at the, at boundary, the line between Neas Williams and the, the church.
Right.
You know, you know the church you're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
And right now, the, the, the city limit line goes down the boundary of four twenty-five and goes out, and I know y'all get sick of me using this term, but it bubbles into Walmart property.
Mm-hmm.
Just go out there and take that in and come back out. Chief crosses the highway and goes down the other side and comes back to that point up by Neas Williams and, and Marlette.
Marlette, right there.
So, those properties, the old Gentry's, what's the concrete statue guy?
Mayberry's.
Mayberry's, Turpens.
Circle K.
Circle K, all those folks in between, they're not in the city limits, even though the road in front of the houses are in the city limits. So, if, you know, if, if the individuals who are requesting, if they're not contiguous through, all along the highway, we go in, kinda like we did down the townhouse. That's not a good memory, is it?
Yeah.
I, I have a good memory of that one. Whoa, now, how do you, I don't know, well, ask that. But anyway, we would go in and just take in those properties, and those in between would not be included. But the highway, the chief would be able to enforce the law to speeding and traffic along the highway, and, uh, it would, it would become a harsh part, but only those folks who, who requested to come in. Wait, did I, did I stop you?
No.
You're finished?
You, you have a request, and I'm sure that, uh, all of the research necessary is gonna be done. You're gonna know what the property is, what a property line, who owns what, when, where.
That's right.
And all, all the different things that goes into it. If, if you possibly could give us a little sketch, you know, like a little map of the area, and, uh, I would like to be able to look at it.
Now, what, that, that brings up another question. In, in, in doing annexation, Mr. Lawrence, who's responsible for paying for all of that property description and all, all the stuff that has to be done in that? I'm pretty sure there's some whittling stuff and all that flood.
Okay, on the, uh, on the Walmart annexation, uh, I know that, that the developers picked up a lot of that cost, and they submitted a lot of it electronically to me.
Mm-hmm.
And we were able to use it. On the de-annexation of the townhouse property that you was talking about a moment ago, I know I did some of that leg, legwork for the city. So, I mean, technically, you can have the landowner or the developer to bear the cost of that, because quite frankly, the city's in that position.
There's some cost involved in it. It's not just a matter of us saying we're gonna take it in and that's it, because there's some stuff that has to happen.
That's right. That's exactly right. And the property description is, is one of the upfront things that you have to get.
Okay. Mr. Gordon?
Another consideration of the cost, who would bear the cost of, of putting those laterals in for the sewer, for that manhole? Because sewer work is, that much sewer would, uh, would encompass a bit of their funds.
Yep, that's true. Action, just, just discuss, so you, you, Mr. Jones, you had something?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I don't think we're in a position to decide whether you, I, I, I wouldn't recommend that you decided to annex the property at this time. I think the decision that, that you probably would wanna make is to decide whether you wanna go forth and investigating some more and talking to the individuals who are involved to see, as Mr. Lenore was saying, what are the parameters? What are the properties we're talking about? How far they go with Mr. Lenore, Mr. Hamlin was saying. And, you know, are we, if, if property goes our way through, through to the Grabout Road, are we talking about annexing property on that side as well? You know? And if we're gonna do this, I think we learned this, Mr. Lawrence, that we're gonna do it, it's just as, it's just as simple to do one big, large area as it is to do almost a small, because the work is...
That's right. It really is.
And whether or not you want to annex the property. Growth is good, but there needs to be some reason and connection. So, tell me what you wanna do.
Can we table it until we get in touch with the landowners and see what they're willing to do?
Okay. Do we need to do further study? Is that what you want us to do?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Lenore, that's what you asked for as well?
Right.
Okay. All right. Uh, what kind of information? I think you've told, Mr. Lawrence, some of the things that you wanted. And, Mr. Lawrence, you know what it is that we need to require. What else is it that, that the board of all the persons would direct the mayor and, and his staff to provide you with, in order to make a sound decision?
Mayor Hawkins.
Mr. Gordon?
I would like to, to investigate the possibility of any of those other businesses, such as the ones we called out a while ago, Mayberry's, Turpens, Circle K, any of those that might would be interested in this annexation process. If the more people you got involved in it that could defer the cost of the infrastructures, utilities, that type of thing, I think would be, be more feasible.
Okay.
I think the young man that came and talked to us about his property and the road to Grabout, uh, you know, we might need to get in touch with him. I don't remember his name, but...
Okay. How many, help me, we're visualizing right now. How, how many residents own that house between, in, in that area? Occupant residents? Can anybody think of any?
'Cause I have a daycare down there.
I mean, but, no, you know, somebody who, who lives there. The, the, the old Gentry house, aren't there a couple of houses right in there?
Uh, Mayor Hawkins, I, well, I, I lived in this area, um, back several months ago, because it was, it's a strange thing, because it wasn't included in the renewal community because of the, the, um, uh, census tract had changed between nineteen ninety and two thousand, and it, it encompasses just that triangular portion there between, if you projected Peach Orchard Road through to the Grabout Road, up to the point there at the intersection of Grabout and one sixty-five. And I believe there's, there are some houses in there, but probably less than a half a dozen right in this area where you're discussing. Now, uh, as you get on through, I think the next road which comes through is Higdon, or I think it's Higdon that comes up from the Grabout Road, and I think if you counted all of those, you're probably looking at maybe twenty houses in that area.
Okay.
And I believe that's Danny Odom that owns that.
He's the one who came to see us, right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Lawrence, you have an idea? It's kind of the stuff that we're gonna need. Mr. Lawrence, you have an idea as to what, what it is?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay.
I have a good understanding and all, uh, investigative.
Is that the director of this board of all the persons?
Yeah.
Yes, Ms. Oliver?
I'd like to know if there would be any definite for growth out there, you know? More like Walmart, we knew Walmart was coming, we worked with them. So, are we just preparing the property? If we did this, would we just be preparing it and hoping that it would be beneficial? Or is there some specific interest in developing that area, so that we would already be positioned to do it? Does that make sense?
As I can appreciate it, and, and, and I'm not gonna put anybody on, on the spot, but I'm kind of aware that there have been several property owners in that area that have been approached since two thousand and six by businesses looking to locate in and around Walmart. So, there's some serious offers that have been made on property and some serious purchases, as I can appreciate it, that have been made by individuals who want to build, and I've heard everything from hotels to, uh, strip shopping centers, restaurants, all, all along that area. But I appreciate what you're saying. We need to, it makes sense to know what potentially we'll, we'll, we'll locate there. So... So, and I think if you refer to what Ms. King said a minute ago with the announcement from the paper mill, and you'd be surprised at the folks who've been sitting around waiting, waiting on something different than this as it relates to the paper mill before they made a move. Because they, one of our friends made a statement back in two thousand and five, two thousand and six, said that if the paper mill left, you might as well roll up the sidewalks in Bastrop. And a lot of people heard that, and they took that seriously, and they, so folks were scared to come. But now that this announcement has been made and that's cleared up, but we will try to get, as part of our, your directive, get as much, what do you call those, what do you call those things? Letters of intent from the property owners who have-
Right.
A letter of intent from somebody who wants to buy the property for a purpose or whatever? Does that make sense?
Yeah, it has an option.
Yeah, option, yeah, yeah, okay.
I'd like to-
We'll do that, Ms. Olive.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Hawkins.
I'd like to go on record, too. It's a good time for us to revisit that zoning ordinance and get it to clicking.
That's being worked on. I don't know if I told you a couple, I'm due to have a visit from some individuals that we're talking to who are gonna be coming back and presenting a proposal for us to do zoning. That's one of the things I'd like to do before this board's term is up, to be sure that we have that either in place or well on the way. Okay? Thank you for that discussion. Hot topic, fireworks. Fireworks. We had a discussion a couple, last month, a couple months ago, about fireworks. Since that discussion, we've had a visit, some representatives from the Chamber of Commerce and some other folks who were interested in doing fireworks displays, had vendors from a nationwide fireworks display company to come, and we have a DVD that's available if you'd like to see it. And we have a proposal, I think, basically, Ms. King, I don't believe you were at that meeting, were you? I don't know if any staff was there, but this is a company who will come in and do a planned fireworks display for somewhere, depending on when it is, for ten thousand dollars or less. So, and as to the test that you gave me, we can have a community-wide public display of fireworks, should your decision be to ban fireworks in the community. But we're open for discussion. I wanted to give that to you preliminarily.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hammond.
We talked about that in finance meeting. First of all, there was some question of whether we could afford the ten thousand dollars and for the display. And we bumped some things around there, and we kinda came up with the idea of cutting the days. Two days for Fourth of July, three days for New Year's. And I learned up in that meeting that you don't shoot them for Christmas. And the elimination of the rockets, because I think the rocket is the one that most people are concerned about in reference to, in reference to causing fires on Roof Bayley.
Okay. We're discussing?
I saw in our packet where, is that twenty thousand for a five-year period, the revenues that we've collected?
Mr. McKee is ill tonight, and he and staff prepared. Sandra, you might, somebody, y'all might need to discuss this.
It's over.
So, what is this?
An average of four thousand all of the year.
That's what we collected in sales tax and occupational licensing? Okay. Okay, say it again, Ms. Olive, so we can be sure everybody's understanding what we're doing.
Okay, we have some data in our packet that includes a five-year total on the revenues that the city receives from fireworks, and it was twenty thousand dollars. So, that's an average of four thousand dollars a year.
That was the benefit that the city of Bastrop derived from the sale of, okay. I wonder if we, and we're speculating as to what fireworks owners would do, if we limited, so, is that, is, Mr. Hammond, your recommendation, so everybody can be clear, the discussion that you had, was that limited to the discharge of fireworks during only that, those days, or the sale only during those days?
It specifically said sales.
Sale, okay.
Hoping they buy them and shoot them up.
Okay. So, okay, and let me hear you. So, a person who was gonna sell fireworks in the city of Bastrop could come in, and they could sell it, and I have my calendar, for, how many days for Christmas? Not for Christmas?
No.
They weren't shooting for Christmas at all?
That's what they said.
Okay. And then for New Year's, they were selling, be able to shoot them?
Three days.
Was it third or first, first and second? Is that, I'm just trying to get an idea.
I don't know what the days were. It just told me, just told me three days for New Year's and two days for-
For the Fourth of July?
No days for New Year.
Okay, how many days for the Fourth of July?
Two.
Two.
Okay, so, probably the day leading up to and the day of, the third, night of the third, and the day of the fourth. And what I'm trying to do is so that, as we think about this, if there are people who potentially might be buying occupational licenses, they would decide if it's worth it to buy a license and to do that with that kind of restriction. Okay, any other comments? And I think a gentleman is here to talk, but any other?
I would like to, along with Ms. Olive, we had a thousand six hundred and twenty police calls, nine building fires, twenty grass fires. So, I don't know that with the manpower that we're using for police calls strictly for fireworks and the fires is worth the four thousand dollars that we take in each year.
Okay, we're discussing?
Mayor Hawkins, I was involved in one of the meetings with one of the guys from Pyrotechnics, I forget the name of the company. But he has stated in that meeting that in most cases, or in all cases, you could generate revenue by establishing a fireworks display. He said, for instance, in Akadish, some of these other places, people travel in, they stay in a motel, they eat at your restaurant, there's some cases where they set up arts and crafts days, you know, it's something that the community could get involved in. I still feel like that we need to pursue or investigate that. That aspect is provide an alternative solution or an alternative source of firework display.
Okay. And I should have mentioned this, Mr. Hammond, when the groups that were talking to the pyrotechnic experts, the thought was that the city of Bastrop wouldn't necessarily pay for this or pay for it totally, but groups like the Chamber of Commerce, maybe some Optimist Clubs, or other groups, civic groups, downtown merchants, or somebody like that would help fund this display if it were to be had. And that's not saying, and I don't know if the discussion about a fireworks display is an either-or, or would you do that, if you didn't ban the fireworks, you went to the days, you'd do the separate days and then have a display as well? So, I don't think it's an either-or situation as you talk about it. Okay. Any other discussions before we hear the gentleman?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Hammond?
If we ban the sale of fireworks in the city of Bastrop, they go across the line and buy them, bring them back in, shoot them off, what do we do?
We have an enforcement problem, wouldn't we?
I wonder if we're gonna arrest them or find the parent, lock them up?
So, Mr.-
That's the position we're in.
Yeah. If you banned it, Mr. Lawrence, we'd have to do an ordinance, wouldn't we?
Yes, yes, I think, and I think, I'm trying to remember, did we introduce one already?
I think there's one already that's playing over, and it calls for a sort of wholesale repeal of all of the ordinance sections that authorize sale and use, but it does not touch the section that deals with granting a permit for a display or pyrotechnics display. So, that was, that could still be done.
Okay.
But that's right.
So, and as to your question, Mr. Hammond, if we did ban it, and the banning, that would be, since banning, when you ban something, you'd also put in there the penalties if people violated the ban? And as I appreciate it, that'd be write tickets for that? Is that a criminal, civil offense, whatever? Citation, they'd have to come to court and pay a fine or whatever like that? Okay? Okay? Mr. Lenore?
I'd like to say, the problem with that is you have a lot of unsupervised firecracker activity going on. Many times, kids are out bursting on the driveway, and there's nobody around supervising them, so, you know, it's difficult to arrest a kid and camp in court.
Parent responsibility.
Yeah, some parental responsibility needs stepping somewhere.
When you have a child, when you have a child violating something like that, the responsible adult, is that the way that usually happens?
Some, sometimes.
Please.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Freeman, would you join him up here, please?
I mean, really, there are two things that can potentially happen. One, the child would go through the juvenile justice system themselves, and it'd be a confidential closed proceeding. But then the other, I guess, would be if the parent has aided or abetted, or if there has been a lack of supervision, sometimes that can be criminal on the part of the parent.
So, if the parent bought the fireworks and it was illegal, then the parent would be responsible?
Right. I mean, you can have a scenario where both the parent and the child can be in trouble, depending on the exact facts.
Okay. Because I think we heard in one meeting that somewhere, somebody told us that it's illegal for children under a certain age to buy fireworks? Under fifteen? Okay. Okay. All right, thank you very much. Sir, would you come forth in addition? I think you have something to say. Tell us who you are.
Mayor Hawkins, excuse-
But one minute.
Let me say something before the gentleman speaks.
Please.
I, when we were in our finance meeting, we talked about other things, and I wanna make the point that as we move into a different age category, baby boomers, and we're older, and it gets on our nerves, but yet at the same time, we don't want to deny the younger generation the fun that comes with the fireworks. So, I think we need to be sensitive, you know, we gotta be sensitive to the older population and yet find a way to address the interest of the younger people who are interested in doing that.
Okay. All right, then. Sir, if you'll tell us who you are.
My name's Billy Keek. I represent Hale Fireworks. At your last meeting, Mitch Hale was the owner of the company and was present, and he was unable to attend this meeting. I am also the district manager for Hale Fireworks in this area, and I had several questions after hearing your discussion. I noticed that the lady on the end talked about how much, if you ban the sales of fireworks inside the city, Bastrop would lose that revenue from the sales tax, and how much money it was costing the city to report to the complaint. My question is, how much money, more money are you gonna spend to write these citations for the people that are going one mile from our location at the old Walmart, one mile to out of the city limit, to the new location, and bringing them back in? Aren't you gonna spend more money writing these citations for them to drive one mile?
You're assuming that they're gonna violate the law?
Sir, there's, how many was there yet?
You're assuming that they're gonna violate the law?
Yes.
Okay, we have to establish that first.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Right now, I can't answer that question, because it's-
We don't know if they're gonna violate the law.
Yeah. I mean, if we had supervision, there would be no problem with it. But we don't have parental supervision much anymore. And we also had people that testified to the injuries that they'd had, losing an eye or getting their hand.
I think what you're doing is debating something, and first, we have to admit that we have law-abiding citizens, and if it's a law, folks not gonna violate the law. So-
But we also have two entities. We have the city, and then we have the parish. Outside the parish, the city police don't go out there.
What he's assuming is that the parish, and I think the parish has taken the position that they're not gonna ban it, banning. And he's saying that if the city bans the sale in the city, people are gonna go outside and buy them in the parish, and that they're gonna come back in the city and discharge them. And his assumption is that people are gonna come back in and violate the law when they know that it's against the law. I think we have a good example of that. I think you, and this is just a parallel, your incident of loud music has reduced since we started enforcing the law?
Yes.
So, my point is, you know, if you wanted to assume that folks in Bastrop were just gonna arbitrarily discharge fireworks on a wholesale fashion, that's a good argument, but people don't want, in most cases, to risk getting a ticket and paying all that. You know, some folks are gonna do it anyway, just like violating the law. But on the whole, if this board of all the persons passed the law, and if we enforced it, and they knew we were gonna enforce it, it would be reduced. But your point is valid. If they're gonna sell them outside in the parish, you know, we're gonna have incidents. Help us with the decision. Where have you, what areas can't you sell fireworks in?
States.
In Louisiana?
In Louisiana. We can sell fireworks anywhere in Louisiana. You mean city or parish?
Cities.
City.
Most instances where we own land, we own the property for the purpose of selling fireworks. If that property was annexed in, we are under a grandfather clause.
Okay. But are there any municipalities that you are not allowed to sell fireworks in cities?
Sure.
Like?
Sure. Tioga, Louisiana, but we own the property, we were grandfathered in. Leesville, Louisiana, you must be outside the city limit.
To sell?
To sell.
Okay. So, you just said something, in situations where they ban fireworks in that city, and if you own the land, they allowed you to continue selling fireworks from your location?
Correct.
Did they also allow people to discharge fireworks in that city?
Yes.
That's interesting. That's a contradiction almost, isn't it? They stopping everybody from selling them, but they letting, that's interesting.
They have an exclusive rights on sales.
Do you sell in Monroe?
Yeah.
West Monroe, Monroe, yes.
They allowed to discharge in Monroe?
Monroe has a city ordinance.
They have, yes, they don't have a city ordinance.
I thought they had.
I'm getting two answers. You have a-
I know West Monroe does not.
City of Monroe does have a city ordinance against firework discharge.
Discharge, okay.
I know for the discharge, but I'm almost certain for sale also.
But you think that, you have a place to sell in Monroe?
Yes, sir.
You sell fireworks in the city of Monroe?
No, not inside the city.
Okay, that was my question, yeah.
No.
Okay. So, they banned the sale and the discharge in Monroe?
In the city limits.
Okay, in the city limits. Okay. Okay. This is a dilemma for us. This is not something that we, as you can tell, there's a difference in opinion here on this body, as to what is the best. And we get calls, I had a call just day before yesterday, from a lady who was saying, talked about the discharging of them and the problems that it caused, and she said, y'all please ban them, because they don't need to be here. And Ms. Olive, this was a more mature person. This was a more mature person. And I guess, as we, if we think about the folks that we talk, who have talked to us about it, it's age-specific. Older folks have issues with them, younger folks want to discharge. From a safety perspective, from our fire person, police department, public works, it becomes a burden for us because of our service, but then that's what we do. So, if the law allows it, we're gonna keep on doing what we do. If the law, if we decide to ban it, then we do from there. And it goes back to what I was talking about, about the annexation. We need to determine if it has benefit to us, if it has benefit to our citizenry, does it enhance or have an impact on the quality of life? Is it what the most of our folks, whatever our personal opinion is, you know, does it need more regulation? As Mr. Hammond was alluding to. Do we need to regulate more? I think I heard somebody talk about banning, did you say eliminating ball rockets, Mr. Hammond?
Yes, yes, sir.
Anything that goes up and lands and has a fire.
Sir, in that situation, you are going to have to be very definitive, such as the state of Kansas, the law reads nothing on a stick, nothing with fins. Anything that goes up in the air eliminates ninety-five to ninety-eight percent of all items. So, you're gonna have to be definitive on your definition of that.
The rockets with the little tubes on them, twenty-four, forty-eight?
Rockets have sticks.
No, no, no. Well, I'm probably not using appropriate- No, 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 well, I'm, I'm probably not using the appropriate term. I bought these bundles of things, rectangle squares, and they shoot up at different times and different heights and do all kinds of reports.
You just like one fuse?
One fuse and tubes, yeah.
That is a multi-shot aerial cake.
Golly.
Most of those tend to go straight up and come down.
They tend to go straight up, and there should be very minimal fallout. A rocket is, the stick's going to come back down.
Well, that's the one we're talking about. Plus the rocket, it probably won't come straight back down.
Not necessarily.
Depends on how you, the angle of...
And the one he is addressing, there shouldn't be anything left to fall back down.
It hit my grandmother, she won't go out there more.
I bought a super duper everything, and the thing went up and out of everybody around, out of all the space, and it came down and hit her, and that ruined her fireworks. So y'all know, no, I'm not. That's, that's, you know my position, but that's not true, but, uh, help us.
Do, you know, man?
Let me ask you, help us. Not from, not from district managers' perspective.
Right, I've seen several instances where cities have gone in, just like he said, and outlawed the sale of rockets. That is one way. Minimizing the days of selling, um, that's pretty hard to do. The state license is good, says that we can open December fifteenth through January first. That is our state selling season through the state of Louisiana. To minimize those days that much, I don't, I mean, I probably wouldn't set up here.
That was the question I was asking earlier.
Right, right. The problem that I have is we own both pieces of property inside the city limits of Bastrop for the sole purpose of selling fireworks.
What does the state give you for July?
Uh, July is a shorter season. It would be June twentieth through July fifth.
Gee, yes.
Got a strong lobby down there.
Twenty-fifth, June twenty-fifth, I'm sorry, through July fifth.
Okay. Where are we? Tell us your name again, sir.
My name's Billy Keek, K-U-E-C-K.
K-U-E-C-K. Where you from?
Uh, Buffalo, Missouri.
Fantastic, thank you for coming.
Could I ask you to repeat what, um, December, January, do you?
The state law of Louisiana is December fifteenth through January first. And those permits, I believe, are seventy-five dollars, one hundred dollars per location, from Baton Rouge at the state fire marshal's office.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes, sir.
Can, 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 can the municipal government make laws more stringent than the state? Come on up, please, sir. That wasn't a setup, but I, I think we've gone through this before.
No, sir.
You can't make laws more stringent than the state?
I'm about to get brain dead here.
Okay, alright. If, if this, in, in the scenario, and, and please, we discuss stuff here, we throw stuff out and we analyze it. If the city of Bastrop adopted an ordinance saying that, okay, for Christmas, it would be, none at Christmas time, and the allowable sales time and discharge time would be December thirty-first, January first, January second, and he's saying that the state law is December whatever through, whatever that period of time is.
I'm sorry, you could be more restrictive than that case.
We can be more restrictive, okay, alright, but not more liberal.
That's right. In other words, you couldn't expand the days.
Okay, but we can draw it in, but we can't, okay, I wanted to clarify that before, as we talk.
Sorry about that, I...
No problem. We've been working it, we appreciate that. Okay. Help us.
If, uh, you have several complaints with product, you know, misuse of product, um, maybe I would look at some items such as rockets. Um, there are several, Louisiana is already a state that will not allow the sale of a small bottle rocket.
Okay, let, let us tell you, and, and, Ms., Ms. Olive, what, and this is not putting you on the spot negatively, but what are some of the complaints that we get?
I think the sound going off over in the now, sometimes the litter, uh, that comes as a result of which one of those items?
Bottle rockets.
Bottle rockets.
Well, litter, litter goes with anything, because if fireworks, when they discharge, the paper blows all over everything, and discharges the stuff that goes up, that leaves the sticks and the paper and all that, so litter, noise.
Fire hazard.
Fire hazard.
Leaves are falling now.
We, we, we have a lot of trees in Bastrop, and everybody doesn't rake their leaves, and they accumulate on the house, and sometimes the bottle rockets are embossed from something falls down and starts fire. We had a specific case where a mobile home almost, well, it did burn, and luckily somebody passed by at three o'clock in the morning and got the folks out of it, so that's one of those horror stories that happens, but our, our fire chief is here, and he can speak to fires started, grass fires, other fires started because of, uh, so those are the kind of complaints that we get.
No time limits?
It's not about product, not totally not about product.
Bodily injury.
No time limits. I've had two call me, say they pop them all night.
Right, what about an ordinance on the time limit to discharge fireworks in the city of Bastrop?
I think, we have that.
What time is that?
What's against you? Nine o'clock is the, is the, is the, is the latest.
But they're still shooting them past that?
At one o'clock.
Enforcement is out, that falls back on us, enforcement is out issue, okay, but we do have a time limit, we got the days set. Supposedly, and it's not a law, but supposedly, I think your instructions are on your, on your packages, there needs to be adult supervision, right? Don't you guys have to?
Adult supervision on every item to be legal in the United States, yes.
Yeah.
And, you know, we follow the state laws, of course, we don't.
That's, yeah, you do what you do.
Right, right.
But though, we're talking about our issues, our, our problems.
What if we put signs up in our locations, you know, explaining this ordinance of not shooting after nine o'clock? How many citizens of Bastrop actually know that ordinance and are aware of it?
Well, and it goes back to something that you said earlier. And, and it's a problem for us enforcing the time requirements, because there, there are many more, when I say important, and I'm not diminishing, I'm not saying it's unimportant, but on a scale of concerns, there are many other concerns that our police department is involved in, rather than trying to run all over, trying to find out who shot a firecracker here and there. And so, in, in one way, the simple way to deal with that is say, do away with it, right? So in between there, there has to be some discipline, right?
Yes.
Could I ask you a question?
Ms. Olive?
Um, where do you live, Missouri?
Missouri, yes.
What's the ordinance with where you live?
There is none.
There is none?
No.
Okay.
Rural or urban area?
Um, twenty-five hundred people.
You live on the Buffalo River?
No, Buffalo, Missouri.
That's what I said to you.
Yes, yes.
Is it the Buffalo River there?
No, that's in Arkansas, man.
Y'all don't float?
We float, but not on the Buffalo River.
Well, what's the river there at Buffalo? I'm sorry, because I've been there quite a bit, but I don't know the name of the river that you have that runs through Buffalo, Missouri.
Uh, Nanga.
Okay, thank you.
Boit?
Mayor Hawkins, what did you say about the, um, display? Is it an and/or, or one or the other?
You know, we, we're, we're at a position where we can have both, none, you know, because we, right now, it's allowed, if, if these groups decide they want to have a display, it's in addition to it, that can happen. If you decide you want to ban fireworks and the groups decide, because I think from the discussion, Mr. Gordon, there was different interests in, in having a display. So, it, you know, it's, it's openness to how and what is done. And I don't, I don't know if, if the thought was that if there were, if there were a display that would reduce folks' desire to shoot, and one thought was, if, if you banned it, then have a display to still, uh, since somebody said that, you know, discharging fireworks is a patriotic kind of thing, and it's way of celebrating freedoms and all that kind of stuff, so it's, it's, it's a decision as to what we want to happen in the city of Bastrop.
If we do nothing tonight, then what?
Then, let's see, licenses, nothing changes, because licenses have already been sold for the balance of this year. On December thirty-first and eleven fifty-nine, those licenses would terminate, and nobody could, unless you, unless you agree that to continue, licenses can be purchased, but I don't know if people who buy licenses would want to buy licenses if they not sure whether or not you got, it'll be allowed, right?
In the state of Louisiana, they actually penalize you if you do not have your state license bought by a certain date.
And what is that date certain?
Um, April first.
So you have a license now for, for oh eight?
Yes, no, not oh eight. For the Christmas season of oh seven, starting December, uh, December fifteenth.
But... So, the, does the license that you have now take you through January second?
Yes.
It does?
State license, yes.
I'm sorry? Please, we need you to be up here. Okay, let me be, let me be clear on this, because I wasn't, our license is through December thirty-first, right? City of Bastrop's license is through December thirty-first. Okay?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Would you introduce yourself?
My name is Brenda Tarver with Tarver Fireworks.
Okay.
And I'm out of Stark, Louisiana.
Okay.
Our state license is good through, through January first at midnight of oh eight. It's already paid for. When we buy a license...
Okay, hold on, let's, we, we, I'm kind of slow, so the license that you have now will expire?
On January the first at midnight of oh eight.
Okay.
Okay, when we buy a license, we buy them, we have to have them bought by, say next year's license will have to be bought by April.
I understand.
And, but it covers the July season and the December season.
Okay, so, so Boit, the only way that they're impacted now is if, 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 if a decision isn't made... Okay, so on January first, eleven fifty-nine, you can't sell fireworks for somebody to shoot on the second anyway?
Right, we can't sell after the first at midnight.
Okay.
January first at midnight is our cutoff time.
Okay, so Boit, you don't have to make a decision?
Not really.
Actually, I got my tent contract faxed for me from Bossier Tent Company, uh, this week, wanting to know if they could set the tent at the Bastrop location next week or the week after.
Okay, but your license is good, your license with the state and your license with the city of Bastrop is good through, through this year, except for, except for January first?
No.
Because that current license, your, your city license, help me...
Well, they're actually, they haven't till February the twenty-eighth to renew, so they could sell on January the first technically.
Okay, when does that city of Bastrop license expire?
License runs from January the first to December the thirty-first. The license is due by January first, is delinquent after February twenty.
Okay, but where I am is, the license that they have right now from the city of Bastrop, and listen to my question again, the license that they have right now for the city of Bastrop, can they sell on January first? Without buying a new license?
Technically, only from, from December the thirty-first.
So the answer to the question is, no, they cannot sell on January first with the license they have right now, right? Because the license expires at eleven fifty-nine, yep, am I making sense? Yeah, so the license in the city of Bastrop, so again, and when I say you don't have to do anything, the only reason that you have, you can't do anything, I mean, that you need to do anything unless you want to say, okay, they have our state license which expires on January first two thousand eight. They're legal, we can't do anything, we choose not to stop them from selling licensed fireworks right now. Whatever we would do would be effective for the next fireworks shooting season.
Two thousand eight.
Does that, you're... Am I making sense?
Yes.
Okay, so you don't have to do anything right now. And that gives you time to study and make a decision for next fireworks season.
Are y'all going to allow us to sell this season?
We can't stop you.
We can't stop you.
We can't stop you. You got a license, and that's, that's not, that's not been, we realize that a while, but we can't stop you from selling this year. And, and my preference right now is not to sell a license for next year until there's some real decision made about this. Mr. Lawrence, help me, if that makes sense. Do y'all follow the way I'm going?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you're good. So y'all need to help us figure out what we're going to do for next year, July fourth and...
On the displays, does the city have fifty to a hundred acres to put on this display?
Yes.
Yeah.
I didn't know.
We, we got that, okay, yeah.
In the meantime, Mayor, could we get with the organizations that you mentioned earlier and talk with them?
Right.
With the council or, or representative, to see how willing they are for a display?
Sure.
And that'll give us a little time to...
Definitely so. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I read something?
Please.
And I'm going to read it, and then I'm going to tell y'all where it came from. I am apt to believe that it will be celebrated by succeeding generations with illuminations, and in parentheses, it says fireworks, from one end of this continent to the other forevermore. This was a quote by one of our founding fathers, John Adams, and it was a quote from July fourth, seventeen seventy-six.
So what's he saying?
Well, I'm just saying that I think, my opinion, which is not y'all's opinion, it's my opinion, I think that as Americans, we should have the right to celebrate the Fourth of July, and we should have the right to celebrate Christmas and New Year's, and fireworks have been going on since seventeen seventy-six.
Okay, so let's be...
And I just think it's a privilege that Americans have, and I think we ought to be allowed to have that privilege.
Okay, and, and let's be clear, you mean celebrate with the discharging of fireworks?
Right, with the fireworks, yes.
Okay, because I don't want everybody to go away from your saying that we're stopping Christmas for the Fourth of July. No, 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 no.
But that's just, that was something that was right by one of our founding fathers, and I just wanted to raise it to y'all.
Thank you very much. We appreciate both your presentations.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Olive?
Um, I appreciate the department collecting the data on the revenues, the police calls, the fires. Let me point out something else. We have about thirteen thousand residents in the city of Bastrop.
That's right.
Okay, roughly about forty-five hundred children, school age children. Okay, so let's, we, we have a lot of things to take into consideration, the public displays, so let's factor that in, the, the population that is interested in fireworks display, and that's not a indication of my personal preference, I just know we have a lot of things to consider.
Okay, okay. I, I wish each of you in your districts would do, do unofficial surveys of your district to get preferences on those from your, from people in your district, so that as you go about making your decisions for next year, you will have an, an idea as to how people feel about it, and let that enter the matrix as we go about this. Okay.
Hey, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Those people talking about doing the display, y'all check with them, see if they can get a discount.
Can we talk? Okay, alright then. Okay, uh, discussion on truancy officer. Mr. Chief, you going to talk about that?
This is a new program, uh, summon, Judge Jones is implementing.
And Judge Marchmont?
Right, and Morehouse Perry, Sheriff, sheriff-elect, uh, some of the police jurymen.
School board?
School board, uh, had a meeting here a couple of weeks ago, um, they're going to have two officers that are going to be, they'll be deputies, so they can do the whole parish. But their job will be just truancy, uh, running down kids that are not showing up for school, um, tagging the parents with citations, and getting the, getting the kids, the parents into the judicial system to try to solve the truancy problem.
Chief, talk to us about, about, about juvenile incidents during the day and, and incidents with kids who...
We have them, yes, uh, to a large extent, not surprisingly. I looked those figures up before this meeting, because they were wanting them, they never asked for them when I got there, but it was very few during the daytime. asked for them when I got there, but it was very few during the daytime. Most of ours is at nighttime. And surprisingly, it's 12, 1, 2 o'clock in the morning, is when we really have a problem with juvenile.
2:00 to 3:00 in the morning.
I guess I would have thought that because, you know, I see kids, I see youngsters that I think are school age walking the street sometimes during the day, I guess I would have thought that there were a lot of juvenile crimes happening during the day.
No, you'll have a burglary every now and then involving juvenile during the daytime, but that's rare.
They just don't go to school, so just hang out?
Hang out somewhere.
Okay, okay.
And that's not saying they're not doing alcohol, drugs, whatever.
Part of this situation is to address, and the school board has brought into this, because my position on it was that this is not going to work if the school system were not willing to keep these kids in school. A lot of the youngsters, juveniles that are not in school, the kids who've been suspended, expelled, can't go to school, so they're just out. And we were told, I think Mrs. Thoreau said that they're going to have a special school...
That they have to be there.
That they had to, right?
Right.
And suspensions won't be go-home for three days, they'll go to this facility, they'll still be under school controls, school system control, and the school system with this child welfare and attendance officer will be getting reports, I think they're doing it already, getting reports from the school every day when a kid isn't there, and they'll be following it with a phone call and all of that, so...
I believe it's a good program, it's working in Washington, it'll work here.
And there's some collaboration involved, because each of us will be asked to contribute something. We're looking at possibly a vehicle.
Right.
One of the vehicles that have been taken out, that has been taken off land that is available, and maybe some space, but we'll just see and try to save some lives. And Chief, since you're here?
Yep.
Get the license?
We have seven renewals, Veterans Private Club, 23, 24 and a half East Madison, Class B Private Club licenses, Class B.
Is that the American Legion?
Right.
Okay.
Kangaroo Express, 3452, 1514 East Madison, Class A Beer Only, Off Premises. Johnson's Bar, 901 Pleasant Drive, Class B Retail Dealer On Premises.